It is, uh, I'm going to call this the city council, the special city council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to consider International Falls Chamber of Commerce plans and business assistance for reopening bars and restaurants. A little backstory on this, there has been conversation in other cities around the state on how the local governments are helping out. I did, uh, talk with Tricia in there. I also have reached out, uh, for businesses to contact us regarding situations of what we can do to try to help. So with that being said, we have a handful of things that we're going to have to consider. It is not nearly as easy as one with things that you can just open up and help. Um, this comes into four definite sections. The first one is the city providing picnic tables to area businesses. The second one would be road, alley, and sidewalk closures. The third one would be temporary structures. And the fourth one would be associated permits per the guidance of the League of Minnesota Cities. The first item we're going to have is the city's ability to provide picnic tables to local businesses. I did reach out to the city administration, I did speak with Public Works. We have a couple of guidance that we'd like to have followed for the businesses to take part of using our picnic tables. One, only businesses within the city limits of International Falls that has a restaurant or a bar license would be able to use the picnic tables of the city. Businesses must request through the city offices via email or in person, the following information must be provided. Business name, business address, contact name, contact phone number. Phone, or, and I'm sorry, the number of tables requested at that location. Picnic tables must stay on the requested property. Picnic tables will be dropped off by Public Works on June 1st, 2020. And picnic tables will be removed by Public Works when the government workers open up seating inside the bars and restaurants. I did, uh, there was some other attachments that we had on this, they have been deleted. Is there any questions or comments? Does the council have any concerns with what's been laid out moving forward with providing the tables? One concern we have, at least on my side, that I have with providing the tables is I don't want us picking them up and dropping them off on any given day. We're dropping them off, we're going to pick them up when this is all over. Any questions or concerns from staff and/or council? All right, so at this time then, the chair would entertain a motion, given the set of criteria that has been laid out to allow local businesses to access picnic tables from the City of International Falls.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Bowler, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech. Councilor Nelson? Absent. Councilor Bowler?
Aye.
And Councilor Kraus?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, 4-0. We will allow local businesses to access city picnic tables. You must call the city offices or email the city office to procure picnic tables to be delivered on June 1st. The second item needs a little bit of backstory. There's two different types of road closures that we can do, and it is different between businesses that sell alcohol and businesses that do not sell alcohol. So the first ones we'll start off with is the businesses that are not serving alcohol, and that would be the Coffee Landing Cafe. Their request is to first, um, vaca-, or, I'm sorry, not vacate, close the city street on Fifth Street, not including the alley to Third Street. This will inclu-, this will allow them to use city picnic tables and to serve customers inside the street. One of the concerns that we had on this was Northland Sales and Service. I did go and speak with them yesterday, they are very acceptable, they understand that the businesses that have not been able to be open, they have been essential business and they've been open the whole time, so they understand and they are very accessible. The one issue that they had is they need access to the alley. Any questions or concerns on the Coffee Landing for the street closure?
Yes. So I definitely may be on the call as well, I know she's trying to be here. I don't know that she wants to close that, her Fifth Avenue, right away. I think her goal is really to maximize seating on the sidewalks and those, but that's just an important thorough right parking spot for both her customers as well as kind of that corner. So I think she, ideally their sensitivity would be to contain on sidewalk space ideally and see about moving into the street.
Okay, and I understand and accept that. Just, uh, we, right now what we're doing is trying to make it as easy on them, we're not going to close the street unless she comes and fills out the paperwork to ask for it. We just want to make sure that the council gives that allotted space in the event that she needs it. Uh, Director Brokaw?
I just want to clarify, it's Fifth Avenue, you said Fifth Street.
Words are hard. Thank you. So with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to allow the Coffee Landing Cafe to fill out paperwork, and the city would allow that street, that avenue, to be, uh, to be closed for business.
Yes. Councilor Kraus?
Yes. We have a motion by Councilor Kraus, do we have a second?
Also Deech, second.
Yeah, we have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech.
Aye.
Councilor Kraus?
Aye.
Councilor Bowler?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, the motion carries, 4-0. The next is for the same building, again, it would be a permit that they have to come in and get to the city. It would be for the Coffee Landing Cafe utilizing the sidewalk in front and west of the business. The one issue that we do have is limited ADA compliance on walking space. There are tables set up there right now, so that is, uh, and they've had, under, I can't say the word, they've had shares out there for quite some time as well for seating. I guess the question is, is do we want to allow them to expand that seating around and have them be able to file a permit and move forward? Does anyone have any questions or concerns on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess my thought would be, since they already got the seating or comment on the, on the Third Street side, maybe if we could just limit it to the, to the Fifth Avenue side just because of ADA and people wanting to walk downtown, it's just kind of my thought on it, I guess.
Fair enough. I, uh, I did have a good conversation with, uh, with Tricia Hyble on this particular issue. She has had them out there for quite some time before the COVID had, and I, uh, I agree, I would like to make sure that in the future that the ADA compliance moves forward. At this time, I think if she's not going to be accessing the street, if we could allow it all the way around and then try to figure out how to move forward with that after the fact, I think it's a good, uh, good compromise moving forward, helping out the business now, and then when things start getting better for them to be able to get that ADA compliance moving forward. Tricia, do you have anything to add to that comment?
Uh, no, I appreciate that, because as you had discussed, they have been there so well, we are looking, you were presented that, and that they are looking to expand outdoor space, both limited and expand, it felt a little contradictory. So if they could move around accordingly, because of that through Corona, and then, you know, you guys can evaluate and talk with her or look at what is or isn't allowed beyond Corona, but I think over any exceptions, none of that could be made, that would be appreciated.
Okay, so then the chair would entertain a motion, if there's no other questions or concerns regarding the sidewalk space?
Councilor Bowler, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Does this include the seating that's already now, this permit?
Yes.
Okay, so they're just, just that seating that's there now is in that permit, so when this is over with, then they need to?
Remove it, it's, it's not compliant now.
Okay.
And, and we, after the fact, we'll deal with that issue.
Yeah, okay.
All right, at this time, the chair would call a question to allow that seating spaces. Uh, Councilor Deech?
Aye.
Councilor Kraus?
Aye.
Councilor Bowler?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 4-0. So next, we have Fifth Street, and this is Border Bar, I have spoke with the owners of Border Bar, they are not ready to open at this time, they are not going to be requesting any city picnic tables, they are not ready to open their business. However, in the future, they may want to do that, and we don't know how long this is going to be, so if we could give them the opportunity to close Fifth Street at the alley and to the, uh, to the Highway 53, they'll still have to file and get the, uh, the permission from the city and get any permits later. This just gets the council action to have already acted on it in the event that they change their mind moving forward. So, again, this is just, uh, um, being prepared for a possible opening moving forward. So the chair would entertain a motion from the board regarding the street request on
I would make the motion, Councilor Bowler.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Also Deech, second.
We have a second by Councilor, we got a second by Councilor Deech, any discussion? Please, Councilor Deech, yes, go ahead.
Have anybody contacted Worley about that access to the East Carolina Street?
That is a negative, I have not contacted them. And I think the reason that I did not contact them at that time is because when I spoke with Mr. Rostie, he was not ready to open up, so I, I stopped my research at that time. Uh, but that is someone that we can reach out to moving forward.
I would be saying the motion's open with the understanding that we give no case to Worley because basically it's blocking that big, this entrance.
Good point, understandable.
Oh, can I, may I, Mr. Mayor, I, this is just in my conversation, Carrie Rostie, last Friday as well, she, they had sensitivity to that, so I think that that was part of their, you know, hesitancy in open seats. They're not getting a patio, I was just to clarify as well, they are doing delivery and surprise pickup, they just want to expand the outdoor seating, was really kind of trying to make it work on that corner with sensitivity, this is traffic and customer sensitivity that I'm worried to be, and I think we're a good brush as well.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech?
Aye.
Councilor Bowler?
Aye.
Councilor Kraus?
Kraus? Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 4-0. Next is Sammy's Pizza, and their request is to, uh, close the alley behind Sammy's Pizza, they own the parking lots on both sides. This is the one that gets a little bit weird with permits later. However, we will discuss that when we get to the permits. So right now, the question is, should we, are we willing to, um, close that alley for them to have seating outside? Chair would entertain a motion to allow that alley to be vacated, or to be closed? Anybody?
Also Deech, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech, do we have a second?
Councilor Bowler, I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. So this is just to close the alley so that we don't have access going back and forth. They plan on putting up a tent in that area. We'll, we'll get more to permits in just a second. So, does anyone have any questions, because I could definitely can answer the questions regarding the permits?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Bowler, is it the alley that's between the two parking lots you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then the, please?
What does this defend, delivery for the back door to the Elks?
Um, it, it shouldn't affect it? That's, that's a weird question, we have a call in right now with the League of Minnesota Cities to clarify if clubs are able to be open after this, uh, at this round? Councilor Kraus, can you please mute your phone while you're not talking? All right, and, and so anyways, right now, we have a call in with the League of Minnesota Cities regarding, um, the Elks and the VFW being clubs, we are not certain that they are able to open at this time. If, if we do close that street, we could work with the Elks somehow, just as we are doing right now, to see how we can make that work for them. I, I don't know how to answer your question better than that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Please.
Wait, okay, so that alley is a one-way, so what if we temporarily stop it for being a one-way, which would allow access to the Elks, they'd worry about that.
Is that a possibility, staff? I don't even know, that's new.
What? The alley's not wide enough.
What?
The alley's not wide enough. Open the alley up to two-way?
Yeah.
It's not wide enough.
But if you block off the one side?
It back in.
You could back up. We can definitely work with, uh, we'll definitely work with the Elks in the event that they can open up.
Mr. Mayor, one thing is looking, literally having the apples right now out the window at that little corner, is that would be ideal, is to have partial access to both directions once, because that's also where front garbage would probably go, to both get that standing garbage as well, as the Elks though, to make sure they can get out of there.
Yeah, and we're going to work with everyone moving forward on this, I mean, that, that's the goal, that's the whole point of the meeting, is to make sure that we can help other local Any other questions that we have?
Mayor?
Please.
I think from my standpoint as the administrator, I think it's prudent to leave the alley open in its current state. I think that Sammy's has enough real estate on both the north side of the alley and the south side of the alley to accommodate their parking, any tent that they want to put on, and still allow pedestrians to cross the alley. It's not a major thoroughfare that has significant amount of traffic, but I think the, um, consequences for garbage collection and access to the small businesses on the east end of the alley as well as the Elks, it would make more sense to leave the whole alley open, and that's my personal opinion, and how I would advise the council to go forward.
The, the one concern I have with not vaca-, or not closing that alley right now is we don't know what size tent they're going to be getting, and if the tent is going to be, because I think they've done the tent on their far alley in the past, it would never fit in their front alley. And if that's where they have to be able to serve, because they can't serve on the other side, that's going to be an issue. Because you can't, according to the permits that we're going to get to afterwards, they cannot serve alcohol on the other side of the alley. So if that, if that tent ends up butting right up to the, the alley, and we have access in it, it's going to be unsafe if it's going to be butted right up to the alley, and that's where my concern is.
How big is their tent?
I don't have the information at this time, I mean, that's going to be a permit issue that we have to get to when they, they come to, um, the city to file for that closure. Because again, all we're doing is giving permission for the closures, they still have to come and request it on their own.
I believe their intention is to have a 25 by 30 tent, that would save some tables that would be apart, and I would just like to echo also the mayor's sentiments of just the distance and safety of having people then cross and exit the alleyway if that's where food is served, you know, and use time added on to the whole dining experience for their distance to bring food, and I think it's a bigger complication for them to be able to afford to handle.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion, or entertain, uh, I'm sorry, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech?
Councilor Deech? Aye.
Councilor Kraus?
Councilor Kraus? Aye.
Councilor Bowler?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 4-0. Next is temporary structures. This, Ken and I have talked about this, and we want to, um, have some conversation. What my, what my issue is, is I don't want to make temporary structures, like legitimate temporary structures that are being built out of wood or, or whatever for the next six weeks, or whatever that looks like. If they want to build a patio, I'm fine with that, if that's what they want to do for their business. But I would like to see us just allow barricades to block off the roads. The city administrator did have some points that he wanted to, uh, bring up about site plans, permits for fencing or tents. City administrator, do you want to just outline kind of what, what your thoughts were on this particular issue?
Well, briefly, Mayor, council, the, uh, state rules talk about fencing, uh, or barricades and demarcations around areas that are closely contiguous to the existing business for outdoor liquor sales as well as food sales, but as it applies to liquor. And so, uh, it just seems prudent to me that I want the council to be aware of that and to consider, um, the location of these particular outdoor seating areas relative to the food service and, and the liquor sales facilities in each business. I want to comply as much as possible with state law, and I think we need to do that, or the council should make findings about what would be acceptable, and I think, as you pointed out earlier, each of the businesses need to submit and approach, or need to approach the council, or the city rather, individually, and then we need to have a conversation about the site plan layout, how parking is going to be accommodated, pedestrian and customer traffic, all those issues, and so a site plan will be necessary. So what we included in the packet was a copy of the standard handout information that the building official and zoning administrator has for people who need to submit permits for, um, structures on their property, be that residential or commercial. So I just think that we need to have a reasoned conversation about those things, and see what we're going to require in the way of permits, uh, to make sure that, um, the site operation works as smoothly as possible and as safely as possible.
Kelly, do you have anything to add? I mean, how, how difficult is this going to be for the businesses in the next four days to come up with a plan to be able to enact it so that they can open on June 1st?
It shouldn't be that difficult. The, the big things to look at is accessibility causes, just like you've spoken about before. If a tent goes up, it still needs to meet the requirements and the accessibility requirements, so we have the distances, which complies with the six people, I mean, you're, you should define, but we should still have some guidance on what they're trying to do in those areas, and just make sure that there's room for travel. You probably have more room, more area to worry about, be in a sidewalk area with downtown businesses where you have a five-foot sidewalk and you place a table in. I don't know how you're going to make the, the six-foot level on the accessibility, wherein streets or in the larger parking areas, there won't be a problem.
So we can, just correct me if I'm wrong, any, any of our staff, are we able to just provide the, the barricades, and then when they come in to file for being able to open or expand their service area with the city, that's something that we can handle relatively
How many barricades do you have today?
Lots.
All right, so, at this point, do, I would accept a motion from the city council to allow the use of, uh, road closure barricades for the businesses that are in the city limits of International Falls.
Councilor Bowler, I still move.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Also Deech?
Counselor, we have a second by Councilor Deech, any, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Councilor Deech?
Aye.
Councilor Kraus?
Kraus? Aye.
Councilor Bowler?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 4-0. So then, uh, for the rest of the, the structures and anything else that, that the businesses may need, would they, or information they're going to have to come to the city, are there fees associated with any of those, uh, those plans, site plans, or anything that we're, we're discussing in the structures? Are there any fees associated with that?
There typically would be unless you lived in the fees, the zoning application fee would be at the latest $50, even on the state.
Okay. So there, there is a $50 zoning application fee that we would, uh, normally charge? Would the council be willing to waive that fee at this time for the businesses of bars and restaurants that are opening and changing their, their plan specifically because of the COVID restrictions that have been put on by the, the governor? We have a, a motion by Councilor Kraus, do we have a second?
Councilor Bowler, I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Please.
So the question, or, or, does the motion allow and require individual business owners to submit a submit a site plan and a permit application for fencing and/or barricades and tents, but we're waiting any fees for that on their site?
That is correct.
And do they have to meet setback requirements, other kinds of requirements? Or as long as it's on their own property, is it okay?
Deep down in my heart, I want to say if it's on their own property, it's okay. With that being, because this is a different time. So deep down in my heart, I want to say it's okay. I would like them to do their best to work under the requirements that we normally have as a state, but nothing that we're doing right now as a state is normal. So I guess I would open that up to council. I know I am more okay with if they're trying to do it on their property to work through the business that they're allowed to have. I'm okay with that right now, but I would open that up to the council as well. Counselor Bowler, your thoughts?
Well, just to their own property, the coffee landing is going to be on the sidewalk. That's their property. So it's going to be little exceptions there, but we've already okayed that. So I'm okay with it too. If it's on their own property that we waive it, we're waiving the fee, we can waive the zoning there too.
Okay. Counselor Kraus, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Bowler, if it's on their property.
Okay, Counselor Deach, your thoughts?
I agree also.
Okay. And I think we're all under the agreement too, that this is no longer in effect as soon as they can get business back into their buildings. I mean, this is a temporary restriction that we are lifting for the city. This is not a long-term fix. This is something, this is a short-term fix. So the answer to your question would be, if it is on their property, we are willing to amend those rules. Yes?
Mayor, then a question if I may, for the building official. So if somebody wants to put a tent up on their property, can tents be erected and constructed in a way that they would maintain wind loads? I mean, if we're in stores that come through this era, is that a concern with individual property owners? I mean, the only way I've seen sometimes I'll even stake them in the pavement and...
I would think you'd want to comply to the best of our abilities. They're not going to need wind loads if they're required to do. It's not possible. But I would recommend that all of them try to meet the setback requirements because of liability issues that maintain with, you know, fire tip over type thing. I mean, we want to make sure that we're trying to comply to the best of our abilities. I mean, I would think you might want to bend the rule a little bit if there's no possible way to meet those requirements. But I think they should still put the effort to do so. I believe most business owners would still try to do that. And when you're talking about putting a temporary structure on your own property is different than putting a temporary structure on a street enclosure, if you ask me, because I believe that someone on their property is going to make sure they meet the requirements to the best of their abilities or whatever they have. But we may want to be concerned if we have a temporary structure placed on a road surface. That is of a concern for us.
Right.
I think we should have, I think you still have to try to meet the best of our abilities. And I believe most business owners are going to try to do the best they can too. But we don't want to exceed their parameters and just say, hey, it's free for all, move forward because if something happens, we're still going to be as responsible as we can be.
Well, and I don't see under any circumstances that we allow temporary structures on the streets, alleys, or sidewalks. I mean, if we're talking to temporary structure as a table and chair, I mean, that's fine. But I don't see tents being erected in the street. I don't see, you know, that isn't what I foresee moving forward. Counselor Bowler.
Could the motion be amended to, at the discretionary judgment of the building official? That way, when the permit comes in, Kelly will be able to see it, and he'll look at it. And if there's some concerns he has, he'll address it with those people and work that problem out.
Okay. So Counselor Bowler, or Counselor Kraus, did you hear the request for your motion change? He wants to amend the motion, he wants to amend the motion to allow the building official to be able to use his discretion?
Absolutely. I'm up for that.
Okay. And Counselor Bowler, if he's willing to do that, you're still take the second?
Yes, I still will, second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second, so the, please.
If I may, mayor, in looking at the documentation from the league and the Department of Health, I believe these individual organizations will also have to provide insurance to cover because it's outside of their premise that they're currently covered for insurance. So I think their insurance companies are going to dictate as well that they have to be following the state guidelines and the different guidelines for any other structure on their property. Because insurance is going to need to be provided. We definitely have to have that in addition to their current policies to move those to outdoor facilities that they currently don't have as a patio.
Correct. And that's actually the next piece that we have, but that's a great point for this piece as well, if the zoning administrator allows that. So, all right, any other discussion?
Question.
So the motion and second that we have on the table is to allow businesses to get zoning permits free of charge, and the information will go to the discretion of the building, Kelly Myers, the zoning department. If he feels that it works, we will move forward with that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Counselor Deach.
Aye.
Counselor Kraus.
Kraus.
Aye.
Counselor Bowler.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries four zero. Next, we have the associated permits per the League of Minnesota Cities, and this is what the deputy administrator just touched on. There are some rules and restrictions that the bars and restaurants definitely are still going to have to follow. I said earlier in today's conversation that there's two different pieces to this. There is those that are serving alcohol and there's those that are not serving alcohol. So for the coffee landing specifically, they will have to get a permit, just as the deputy administrator had pointed out, to expand their service area outside their zoning properties of their building. There is, is there paperwork that has to be filed through the city or is that just through their insurance?
I believe that will go along with their application to allow for that space, and then they would need to give that information to their insurance company.
Okay. So there's no fees associated with that? Okay. So then, we have to make sure that the businesses understand that are serving alcohol, they cannot serve alcohol on any city property, and that is a state law. If you were to want to serve alcohol on state or city property, you have to apply for a state permit for that. That's outside of our jurisdiction. There's nothing we can do for that. So in the event of Sammy's Pizza, specifically, they can only serve on the north side of the alley. They, well, they can only serve alcohol on the north side of the alley. They could serve pizza and soda and whatever else they want on the south side of the alley. They can only serve alcohol on the north side of the alley. Again, if they're going to be extending out their service area, they are going to have to speak to their insurance company to work all of that stuff out. Same issue with, is going to come up with chocolate mousse. They do serve beer and wine. In the event that they want to serve beer and wine, they can do it as long as it's on their property. And again, they have to make sure that their insurance is covering all of that. That's pretty much where we're at right now. I don't see anything else on my list of things that we needed to cover, but I'll open it up to administration if they have any questions, or the chamber if they have any questions, or anyone on the line for that matter. Does, first of all, does administration have any questions or on how we're going to move forward with this?
Mayor.
Yes.
What's the council's preferences regarding ensuring that businesses that are going to be opening June 1st and thereafter have a preparedness plan? Is that something that the city council wants us to verify, or as part of our review and permitting process? Or is that not necessary?
It is my position that it is not necessary for the city to be involved in that. And the only reason I say that is, all of our downtown businesses, the retail shops, we are not verifying their preparative plans. We are not verifying the preparative plans of any of the other businesses, the big box retailers, the grocery stores. So I don't know why we would be working on that specifically for the bars and restaurants as they open. I guess I do see a little bit more of a handshake because we're providing some assistance to them. But with that being said, I don't see the need for us to be involved in their preparative plans.
Well, I raised the question because the governor has indicated that I think before businesses can open, that they're required to have such preparedness plans. And so I just want to know if the city is supposed to be in a position to verify that or not? It sounds like your opinion is that's not necessary for the city to do that.
I guess I would just ask this question. Have we verified any of the other preparative plans in town?
No, but I understand that there's been enforcement action taken for businesses in Koochichin County. And I'm just wondering, if we're going to get into that position, I want to make sure that staff is informed about the council's intent and how we need to proceed.
And I do believe that there is a position that we have to have with our local businesses and making sure that what the governor's orders are being followed. But I think there's a difference between that and a preparative plan because we're not enforcing or ensuring that anyone has a preparative plan at this point. I will open it up for the council's discussion on that. Any member of the council feel differently or feel strongly, one way or another? The silence is deafening. All right. Any other, any other concerns from the administration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I think it's great that we're supporting these businesses and we need to do that. But it's also important that they all understand if we start serving alcohol outside, that even though it's not inside of the bar, it's still going to have to stay on that licensed premises. It can't be wandering down the sidewalk. And those establishments will be held responsible for that. So we're going to have to have plans in place to keep that contained.
Okay. And I think that that's fair. Tricia, would you be willing to work with, on behalf of the city, to kind of have that conversation with some of our business owners that alcohol cannot leave the premise?
Absolutely.
Public Works Director Brokaw.
I want to try to, you know, one of the things that concerns me, if we do get the situation where it's on a street down and we do barricade, that means nobody goes in there. Doesn't matter, you know, the safety is going to be the utmost concern as far as I feel. And if somebody makes a request for something to be shut down, it's got to stay shut down until they open it up to everybody.
I can agree that too. And that can be a conversation piece that we have when they file for the closures. Because as of right now, we are allowing for the closures, and those conversations can have, be had with the administration as they request those closures. But thank you. Anybody on the phone have any questions or concerns that they'd like to discuss with the council or any clarification? Please.
I have a couple of ideas here. So I'm going to back up to the picnic tables and just after a point of clarification, which is if a business would like additional tables beyond June 1st, or did not request in the first round, would like tables after June 1, is that an option to get additional tables at their own pickup, you know, option? I get it, I totally understand the trying to control the city workers who are just doing picnic table maneuvering all summer. So, but if somebody wants more or wants some, did not get some, would they be a better option?
I would refer this one to the city administrator. Because we did have it outlined on how to handle that particular situation, and it was asked to be deleted from the paperwork. So I was just curious on your thoughts on moving forward with that, Ken.
Yeah, I think my preference is to, because of understanding where they're at, where they're positioned, and they're heavy, and make sure that they're not damaged, which in the past has occurred. That's why I suggested that they committed for having individual businesses pick them up themselves.
Okay. So then, so then I guess the question would be, number one, I want to make sure that the businesses have them moving forward. But my concern from the very beginning was I don't want public works moving one way or another, trying to move them from June 1st and then June 6th, and then June 12th, moving them all the time. So I guess I would have that question with the council.
Ted Stotts.
Huh?
What's Commissioner Public Works' thoughts?
Do you have concern on maybe picking and dropping them off on the first of every Monday if people need more throughout the course of the week? But I don't want to be doing it all the time. But that caters to the concern that the city administrator has with liability of people picking them up and damaging them, so.
I would just assume we haul them.
Okay.
And we drop them off and we pick them up due to the fact that we know where they're going. You know, we've, I'm not saying we're going to take them, but, and I, we'll have summer staff on next week, so, you know, so we're not hauling them every day, but if we want to pick one day a week or twice a week, we'll be doing it.
Yeah, could we pick it on a Monday? They go through a week and they say, well, we need two more tables come Monday, that'd be...
It sounds like we're willing to pick up and drop off on Mondays.
And I agree with the initial push, and I think everybody's really going to want it right away. And hopefully there's not a lot of stragglers who would want to be on the first and drop off. So I just wanted, I was just looking for that. I also, so then in regards to this full application process then that the business needs to apply, if you come in and fill out like for picnic tables or a sidewalk closure or confirmation of the three alley closures that we did, is there, I mean, so weird, like you said, it's Wednesday afternoon, this is coming Monday, is that, like since this week are going to add, is this thing like, are those forms going to be available quickly now that zoning review is required? Like, does the city just prefer that there'll be quick timeliness and turnaround to that as everybody's kind of working through this under a very short timeline of execution?
Yes, it is our intention to move forward as fast as possible. It should be relatively quickly.
One concern I have is that, just like say Sammy's decides, oh, we need 25 picnic tables. I mean, I think they need to be conservative in how they start out so that, you know, they can always add more, but just to be, I just don't want these guys to have to move all these tables in there and use 10 of them for the first week. And you can always add more tables the next week.
Yep.
So when I, last Friday, I think I spoke with the owner of Sammy's and Chocolate Mousse as well. So those are the only two that I know is putting up tents. And they were looking at, you know, it'll be a anchor, secure, big tent because they're trying to replicate the dining room scenario in the tent house. So they mostly got tables and chairs of theirs that they're going to use. They as possibly only needed a couple of picnic table seats. And I think the strict positions and, you know, the space allotment really around all of these businesses is so limited. Nobody's really, those may be the only two with either space enough to get close to like 50 people outside. It's just really a way to expand their curfew dining and just start to rebuild that base a little bit. So I don't think getting too out of control is...
And that's my thought too. I do realize that Sammy's is probably the one that would be utilizing the most. be utilizing the most, and they're not using many at all, just because of the situation of what they're doing. But I, I just want to make sure that everyone has enough. And I, I actually foresee a lot of our city parks being used this summer, a lot more with people dining and going places. So I want to make sure that we have enough for all of our city parks moving forward, but it shouldn't be a problem. Anybody else have any questions? Tricia, you still have another one?
I don't, I don't have another question. I would just like to thank the mayor and the council for really your just timely responsiveness to our business community as everybody is just really doing our best to move through this. You know, every week is something new and different. So you're, you're having a meeting right away, because there were a lot of details like this to flush through and to get this out to our businesses. So they are, you know, setting up everything appropriately from the get-go. I just, I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or, or concerns regarding specifically the, the businesses and the June 1st opening? All right. Hearing none, there is no other business before the city council. I just want to verify that our next city council, regular city council meeting will be on Monday, June 1st at 5:30. Ken has a point?
Mayor, we've had some discussions with our auditing firm, Ryan Schmidt. And the council might recall that we always have a presentation of the city's audit. And Mr. Schmidt is prepared to do that on June 1st at 4 o'clock. The council can maybe say self-available to do it then, which is typically what we've done is just before a city council meeting. I know that some of the council have some difficulty getting here before 5 o'clock. So we could schedule a time after a regular meeting or a special meeting, if it'll just, I know it's outside the scope of the agenda. But are you okay with meeting at 4 o'clock on the 1st? It's a tentative time we set up with them. If you're not, I would just like, like to know when the council would like to have that meeting with them.
4 o'clock works for me. Does it, Counselor Buller?
Yes.
Counselor Kraus? Counselor Deach?
I couldn't hear all the conversation, but I'm sure it's fine.
I love you. You're the best. All right, yeah, 4 o'clock works. And at that meeting, I will be shaved. I will be getting a haircut that morning because the, the barbers and, and salons are opening up, so I can ditch the beard and facial hair, and it's going to be fantastic.
Nobody's going to recognize.
No one's going to even know who I am.
You look, you look just like Dr. Phil.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to let everybody know the, the city council is committed to getting through this COVID-19, whether it's our businesses, our residents, city staff. We're, we're just trying to get through this like everybody else. So we greatly appreciate the input that the chamber has been able to give. We're, we're very happy that we're able to help out some of our businesses. We're, we're in this together. We're, we're probably at the halfway point. Laurel, do not quote me as saying that. All right. Thank you. This is, this meeting is adjourned.